All right, well, I will. I will hold back and who is going to get this one off?
Daniel, did you want to go first or did you want me to go ahead with the?
No, I was deferring to you. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So what we have here is an addition that was already approved in two thousand and eighteen. The variance for it was approved in two thousand and eighteen and the site plan was approved in two thousand and eighteen. As the rules state that if it doesn't gain a vested interest within a one-year timeframe, that it has to go back. You lose your, you lose your interest and you lose your approval. So Mr. Finling unfortunately wasn't able to do that. So he finds himself back here with the exact same project that he had. Back in two thousand and eighteen, there's been no changes. He did go to the zoning board of appeals and he regained his variance. And now he's here for you for a very, for a site plan approval for a very modest addition to his sunroom. Just a little bit of background on it is that the reason that he needed the variance was because the house, while it's physically off of Pembroke, is clearly platted off of Hendry and that's a problem. And it was granted a variance because it doesn't exacerbate any side yard setbacks, anything more than already was there. He's not going any closer to the street than the existing house. On the sides, he's not going any closer than neighbors lot on the other side. He's not going any closer to Hendry. So that was the impetus for the variance on that particular issue. And then if you take a look at the elevations which were provided for you, this is really a very simple addition. And all it really does is it makes the room more functional for him. And that's, that's kind of where he's at with this. So if you have any questions with this, this is really, really small. You can see where we're at with it. And it's just the sunroom is all he's looking for. Do you have any questions or anything like that? I'm happy to answer them. It meets our standards. It meets our house size. It meets our front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks. It meets a lot covered. And it's well under the house size. And it's actually still smaller than the house next door even with the addition. So. With that, Mr. Chair, I would turn it over. Mr. Finling, is there anything you want to add or I'm happy to answer any questions?
I have nothing to add other than to say it's our intention to, you know, both have a more functional room and also beautify the, the area because it's the Florida room that's there is quite unsightly. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll first open up to public participation.
Ian, can I come over?
That's you.
All right, no other public participation will close it. We'll go around the room. Chris.
All right, no, no questions for me.
Thanks, Chris. Gail.
I have two questions. Dan, is the roof on the sunroof a metal roof? I'm trying to understand what's the, what the drawing is.
Yeah, so the answer is yes. And the existing kitchen addition, there is a, a luminized roof that is in the, in the tone of copper. I don't know what the correct description of that is. And this roof would match the existing roof.
Okay, and then you are also going for the addition above the garage on the second story, correct?
That is at another time. It's not part of this project.
Okay.
My wife and I created a master plan when we first bought the house and this is just a partial fulfillment of that master plan.
Okay, because it was in the drawings and so I was confused because it was only talking about first floor and we were seeing first and second floor. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Todd.
No, no questions. I'm good.
Thank you. Blake.
I have no questions. Be straightforward. Looks great.
Thanks, Blake. Rick?
No questions.
Thank you. All right, that said, it looks like we are looking for motion.
I'll move to approve. The first floor addition is submitted.
Thanks, Gail. Give a second.
Second.
Thanks, Todd. Chris? Blake?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Looks like passes rank.
Thank you. We're good.
All right, good luck with your project.
You are, sir.
All right, thank you.
You now have a year to get your permit.
It's starting in a couple of weeks. Everyone's invited. Everyone's invited for a drink when it's done. Thank you so much. Bye bye.
Okay, next item up is, I am not even going to take a stab at pronunciation of your last name, sir.
Come on.
What is it?
It's, well, technically Baj, if you are Polish or Hungarian, but we've always pronounced it Badges, so I don't see why we should start pronouncing it correctly now.
All right, we're looking at an addition, one, two, seven, six, nine, Elgin. Did you want to take it first or Hank or did you have somebody else on?
I was going to defer to Hank on that one. I can answer anything that's left undefined for you guys.
Sounds good.
Just, just to point out, Mike, Mr. Badges, who I did learn the pronunciation from his name this afternoon, so I can come off like the expert. But anyway, he, he was supposed to have his builder here, but his builder was out of town and unable to make it this evening. So he's going to defer to my description and then if there's any other questions or things like that, he certainly can always feel free to chime in and we'll be happy to answer him as best as we can together. We're looking at a twenty-two and a half feet roughly height addition, small. Front yard is the same. It's posed at thirty point six. Side yards, ten point two, one side, twenty-seven point two total. It has a very wide berth. It's a narrow house. The rear yard is required at thirty-five, proposed is fifty-five. Twenty-four percent lot coverage where thirty percent is allowed. And nineteen ninety-two square feet is allowed without any design bonuses, including lot size bonus. And he is actually at nineteen seventy-one with no bonuses needed. So he's well under, this is a very small addition. The house sits on a fifty-five by one twenty-five lot, roughly six thousand eight hundred thirty-six square feet. A bungalow with one point seven five stories. Exterior material is brick and siding with a detached garage. So if you take a look at the elevation, see the first page, you can take a look at it. You can see where the addition is going to be on the second floor. And if you take a look at what's been done with it, you have basically first floor structure that's going to be brick. The second floor was made out of siding. The siding is a James Hardy product, which is meant just material, which allows for sturdiness. It's not a vinyl. It's a lot more sturdy. It holds up to the weather better. It doesn't typically fade as much. And also it allows for a little bit less massing in the back because of the break in materials makes a difference with that respect. If you take a look at the elevations, you will see that what he's trying to obtain here is a new master suite. Part of the original house is being reconfigured on the inside. The questions really start to arise with this particular project with the elevations. And if you take a look at your rear elevation, you can make a case for saying that the part that's coming out is going to be with two windows on the top side with the cedar shake shingle. Actually, and again, that's, I'm assuming a James Hardy product. It's not completely called out there. But you can take a look at that part that's projecting out furthest and say that that may have enough architectural interest. The part where the new closet and laundry room is, is sparse with the windows. You see one small window to the top side. And also the left elevation where you see the windows may look a little bit awkward. You may want to discuss that. While on the right side elevation, it looks a little bit more balanced with the windows and sizes between the two. So in reviewing the plan, the biggest thing that we found that you probably wanted to discuss this evening was going to be the window configuration sizes and the break in architectural interest on the elevation. If there's any questions that you might have, I'm happy to answer them as I'm sure Mr. Badges is here and certainly can contribute as well.
All right, yeah, ask away if there are any.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Is that to the public or just for the commission first?
If Hank and Ben are done, we can open it up for public participation. If you just state your name and address, if you're ready.
Certainly, my name is Anthea Papiste. I'm the neighbor to the east and I just got these Ben today. So I was looking for them. Thank you, Hank. So it, you know, and I'm not an expert at all at analyzing house plans, but I just wanted to ask a question about the side yards. Does this, so everything is really within limits? Is that correct, Hank? Like nothing is like?
Yeah, just to restate that, no, it's correct. Actually, the addition is behind the house. They're not, they're not in violation of any side yard restrictions whatsoever. In fact, they're keeping the same building line. So what will happen is that what you have is you have a building line. It's just going to continue back another twelve feet other than what it is. So that's really what you're looking at. My concern with the elevations was really the windows, which I know was something planning commission tends to bring up.
Okay, yeah, so it's, it's, Ben, it's just like a back addition. Is that all? Is just guys are popping out the back?
Yeah, and taking advantage or building into the existing dead attic space. We're going to make that a full story so we can get a laundry and walk-in closet for the master suite.
That's cool. How long do you think it's going to take, Ben, to complete?
It's, I think a lot of it's going to be material availability and contractor availability. You know, I think normally the builder said that these projects will take, you know, four to six months, but with the way things are, he's says, you know, that's kind of optimistic, but but we'll see. Hopefully that, that long, but we'll see.
I, I think that I can maybe help with this. It, it seems that what we're seeing is a tremendous uptick in the wait time for materials. So even if materials pending approval this evening, if he gets approval this evening and the order for materials went in tomorrow, it could realistically be, you know, four months before he sees a rough pack of the lumber. So, you know, having said that, there's no sense in starting the project and then have it sit for six months doing that. So I'm sure that that's a conversation that Mr. Badges will have with his contractor. Right. Serve the neighborhood best and it would also serve him best is that it saves him time. He's not writing checks for work that's not happening.
Right, yeah. I don't want them to tear the rear of the house off and then leave it. So, so hopefully, yeah, we can schedule it so, so that we only start once we can actually accomplish something.
Yeah, and Ben, I'll be in touch with you just in terms of timetable because I've been doing the hybrid work. Thing and just so I can coordinate accordingly. So I'm not on a hearing.
Yeah.
The buzz on.
Right.
Background. So, okay, that's cool. I just wanted to, I just wanted to check the dimensions, but it sounds like everything is within, you know, norms. Nothing unusual in that way. So and then the guys, of course, will not block our driveways going out and we'll coordinate it. So.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's all stuff too that, you know, if there are some problems with that, that the city can be your friend with that. We do talk to the contractors on a regular basis. A lot of them do more than one project in here. Some people are new and they're from a little bit of distance out and they have to be apprised of our rules, if you will, but impinging on their rights to, you know, come and go from residence and things like that are not something that we would look favorably at.
Okay, cool. Yeah. That's it for me. Yeah, congratulations. It's exciting.
Yeah, what hasn't happened yet, so hopefully we'll see what we get into.
He still needs five votes. Just a detail.
Any other members of the public present wish to speak? All right, we'll close public participation and we'll start with Rick.
First question, the dormer that's coming off the front right now. It currently doesn't show that that siding would be replaced. Would that be replaced as part of the back?
Um. I'm, I'm open to that idea or discussing that if that's, if that's a requirement. Presently, that wasn't part of the project.
Perhaps you can identify what the material is on the front.
Um. Without, without climbing up there, I, I suspect that it's aluminum. You know, kind of brown in color, if you want to call it that. And it's only on the, you know, obviously the vertical surfaces of it. But we can discuss that with our builder. I'm not sure exactly what kind of, I would imagine be a minimal cost item to do, but um.
Okay, so that's my first concern.
Okay.
The next concern would be the rear elevation. On the existing side, sorry with the plan noise. You have one very small window going into the closet.
Yep.
What, I think it's a one by two foot transom window.
That's correct.
It, it's currently not aligned in elevation with the other windows and also that there is, it, it looks very small relative to the wall size.
Okay. Um. Yeah, that, that's something that we probably can address. I think some of our concern originally was, you know, it's, it's kind of a minimally sized walk-in closet. And so if we did too large of a window in there, we'd wipe out one of the, you know, usable walls of the walk-in closet. We can definitely work on aligning it with, although I can't tell based on how this is drawn necessarily if that's what the top level of the window is relative to the other windows of the master bedroom. And then the neighboring room to that walk-in closet is a laundry room. So we didn't want to put too much on those walls or else you lose any opportunity to have, you know, cabinets to store anything in the laundry room. I think that space might allow for a window centered over the laundry tub on that. Centered on that wall or that room, right, I should say.
So my request would be that the window on the elevation is, is lined up with the other transom windows and that there's some symmetry and size. It doesn't, it wouldn't have to be huge, but just.
Okay.
Something to make it look like you put a window there, not just.
There happened to be a hole in the wall?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I can ask, I can ask the designer, you know, if, if we can match the height and obviously the, the elevation from the ground for the window and maybe the same height, maybe just narrower than the other two.
Typically, a header height is six eight. So I mean, the, the bottom line is you'll be able to match that.
Okay.
It, it won't be a problem. It's just that when you would come in, if the motion would include that, then I would look for that window when it came in. Same for any changes that might be made and incorporated into the motion.
Okay, and then Hank, I might need your help with this one. On the left elevation, where the additions coming off of the existing roof line?
Yes.
In that corner, do you understand what's going on in that corner?
It's, it's not the most clear detail on the drawings, but basically what they're doing is, is that they're, they're showing the side. You can pick it up a little bit on, if you take a look at the rear elevation, it's in line with it. So what he has is the ridge line that's coming down and picking it up and coming straight down to where the pine line would be between the first and second floor. So it's straight. It's not, I guess someone, I, I'm going to say it's not articulated real well on the plans. But I mean, it's just something where he's going to have to, when he goes to build that, it's not going to be as easy as it looks.
It, it, it does not look correct as it stands.
That's pretty much what it is. But I mean, that's, that's actually kind of the look he's going to have. He's going to have where that siding is. That siding is going to go up on that. And it looks like from your rear elevation that it's exactly in line with that. So when you take a look at that and you see that it's over the brick, you see that it's over the brick on that side. It looks like what he's trying to do is he's trying to carry the pine line up straight and then take like a forty-five degree heading back to the left on that side as you're looking at it. And it's not going to be that easy. There's going to be a lot of step flashing. It's going to have to go with the siding. There's going to be, you know, there's some, there's a lot of detail that's going to have to be worked out in the field or the building official may require it when he cuts the plans in for the actual permit.
Okay. All right.
And I will tell you that the person that's drawing these is a draftsman, not an architect. So I think some of those details may be forthcoming when the final plans. Dwayne will want to know that.
Okay. Hey, Mike, that's it for me.
All right, thanks, Rick. Blake?
Yeah, frankly, Rick addressed all of my questions, comments and concerns. I mean, I, that the windows and the fenestration on the left elevation, that rear elevation and then the drawing detail all seemed a little funky to me, but I think that's been clarified. So, yeah, I mean, my, I guess my suggestion would be to take those small windows and sort of bring them into scale with some of the other windows, header height to Hank's note, and those are my only comments.
Okay.
Thanks, Blake. Todd?
Yeah. Just, just a little clarification, that, that rear window that we've been talking about that's been irritating everybody. What, I'm just curious, you know, yeah, it, it does look out of place. It's one of those that ninety-nine percent of the population of Huntington Woods won't see it. But just out of curiosity, what, what is it? What was the purpose of it? Do you know? I mean, other than, yeah, I get it as a window, but I mean, was it just like we, we just decided to put a window in there? You know, Ben?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's for the walk-in closet. So, yeah, I'm not.
To get some natural light?
Yeah, I, I believe that was the point. But are you suggesting maybe eliminating it versus leaving it there or?
I just rethinking the purpose of it.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I'm with you as a homeowner, the, you know, you want the wall space versus, versus trying to make it look like the other side of it, the other windows fall in line. And then going to what Rick said around the siding up front. Some of the things that we look at, you know, along with the windows and how things, you know, aesthetically look. If you have multiple things going on with new Hardy board in the back and the vinyl or aluminum up front and it's trying to get that continuity from across the, across the house.
Right. Yeah, I'm open to the idea of, of having the builder replace the Hardy or, you know, the siding is currently on the dormer with Hardy to match the rear. So it'd be the same front and back. If, if that's what you're looking for, because I mean, it'd be a very small number of square feet.
Right. Yeah, it, it's not like it's, it's, I hate, you know, and I hate to impose more financial burden on any homeowner. But I know from a planning commission perspective, that's one of the things we look for. And then I just have one side question. Did the internal bathroom ever get done?
Not yet.
Okay. I'll let it go.
Yeah.
I'll let that one go as is.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could just to offer a suggestion that may, that Rick may find or Todd also may find. The window that's in the closet, if that's something that he would like to have, certainly he should have it. My suggestion would be is to pull that window out of there and put in a bigger window right over the room, you know, put a bigger window over the sink area in the plan. And in doing so, that would split that, split that addition fairly well and introduce a bigger window, provide more architectural interest and actually give Mr. Badges some room that he can actually expect to get some air infiltration or something like that. So I'm, I'm not sure if that's something that he would entertain. But that may solve some of the problem that everybody seems to be having with the windows on that particular rear elevation with the laundry room. If you take a look at the plan and you see where the sink lines up for that. See if I can get to that plan here. Of course, it's the last one I look at. If you take a look at it and you see that it splits between the washer and the dryer on there, there's an opportunity to get a bigger window in there and actually provide more architectural interest, something maybe two by two, two by two and a half, something of that nature in there. And that would split that window, split that wall a little bit better. If he wants to keep the window in there, certainly he should keep it. But by adding that, that adds architectural interest and also helps with the fenestration that we look for. And also doesn't really hurt the pocketbook all that much, but that's up to everybody to consider.
I would be open to that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to that idea as well. Couldn't be that big of a difference cost-wise.
I think that's a good suggestion, Hank.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right. Thanks, Hank.
Yep.
Let's see, where'd we live off? Blake, you're all set, right? Todd? You're all set? Gail?
All set.
Okay, first a question for you, Hank. The addition of the family room and master bedroom appears to be, what is it, one point seven feet off the corner of the garage because it's less than ten feet? It's twelve feet and twenty feet. So is it because it's over to the side that it will still comply with the ten-foot setback of the house to the garage?
Based on the information that we have, yes, but upon the review that we have, and hold on one quick second here. When you're taking a look at that right now, what I have is with the original drawing, I don't have that on there. So I believe that it will. They will have to show us prior to that actual working or they will have to provide where the garage will have to be insulated or with a one-hour fire rating will have to be added to.
Okay.
If it's less than that in order for the building official to approve that.
Yeah, because I'm looking at it and if it's one point seven feet west of the corner of the garage, does that mean that it doesn't have to be ten feet away because it's only eight? You know, that's my question when I look at the drawing.
Well, you, you're now out of the planning and you're into the building department. And basically what will have to happen is, is that he will have to maintain his ten feet or they will have to fire rate that portion of the garage.
Okay, thank you. The other concern I had was also in windows. I didn't like the window in the closet. I'm wondering, you're using the original windows in the rest of the original house, which are divided windows? Is that correct? And you're not, and you're not replacing those and the windows you're putting into the new addition are single glass windows and not divided?
Um, I think that is a likely, a just an oversight and the drawing itself. I believe we were, we were keeping it consistent across the house to have the same.
That's what I'd like to see. I thought that it looked funny.
Yeah.
And Hank, is there a certain size for the egress window that's on the second story? Because again, it's just an odd sized window compared to the other ones that are up there.
Egress will have to be made. So regardless of what they're doing with the new master suite, my guess is, is that they believe that the window. Um, I guess is is that they believe that the window on the. Left elevation would be sufficient for egress that'll have to be sized accordingly according to the building department. And make clear egress standards. So if it, if it does not, they won't approve it.
Okay. Cause I just thought that it was longer than the windows of the original part of the house and therefore. Could it be shortened so that the windows are consistent because there's so many different sized windows? On the left side of the house that, that one being longer. You know, I just wondered whether it could be shortened to match the double hung windows. That were in the original part, but.
I would suggest not only from the standpoint that it was made that way either because of egress.
Okay.
Or we would rather have bigger windows rather than smaller windows since it provides more architectural interest. And in this case, safety. And because that's the only window drawn like that. I'm going to assume. That it was designed for egress, but that'll be flushed out on the final plans that have to go to the building department.
Okay, then that does it for me with the. Closet window and whether the other windows were divided windows to match the. Architectural detail of the rest of the house and the garage placement to the back of the corner. That's it.
Thanks Gail.
Thanks.
Chris.
I think all my questions have been answered already. Thanks.
Okay, and uh, I think same for me. I think everybody's uh, brought forward all of my concerns. So if there's nothing else to add, we are looking for a motion.
Mister Chairs, this is likely to be a complicated motion if a favorable motion is forthcoming. Uh, just to remind the commission that. Uh, the details that Mister Badges has indicated that he would be willing to the, to provide. As well as uh. Any of the considerations and changes to the elevations. Just be incorporated into the motion, so there's no doubt as to what it is that Mister Badges. Possible for doing.
Yeah, it is a complicated one. That's when everybody's afraid to make it.
Right? So it's like Todd's thinking about it though.
I am. I I I wanna get it going because it, we, we'll figure this out. I think we're, I think we all um. Are in favor of the addition and uh. These were all good um, suggestions, ideas uh, that we, we think. That should move forward. Um, and I'm just gonna, Hank, I'm gonna just. You know, throw out the things that we talked about. Uh, to clarify what needs to be changed and I'll look to you and others. I move to approve this with the, the following changes, accepted changes. Um, one, the uh. Window in the back. Uh, be uh, set up so that it uh, would be in the uh, laundry room over in the centered over the sink. Two, uh, the front siding. Uh, be uh. Uh, matched with hardy board uh, on the front as well as the back to stand, so the same siding. Consistent. Throughout the house. And then. I don't, I don't even know how to touch the uh, the drawing part, the, that corner piece. Um, it, do we just leave that one alone at this point? I think the two biggest points were. The front siding uh, and the uh, side, the back window.
My suggestion would be is that uh, our building official's gonna wanna see how he's doing that. And there's some things on the drawing that are gonna have to be flushed out. For example, the egress window says egress window. But it doesn't give you the size and it also doesn't really delineate what kind it is, whether it's swing away hinges, however it is. So I think um. That would be more of a building department thing. Um, but I I I would be very confident that uh, Duane Frank's building official will be having uh. A talk with the designer to flush out those details before this gets approved. It can be approved here, but until it gets past the building department, it's not gonna. You know, it's not gonna be, but even even that discourse that those two will have. Um, doesn't preclude uh, Mister Badges from going ahead and ordering the materials at this point in time. So depending on how you go. So basically, the way that I see the motion Todd is, is that. Uh, with the siding change to match front to back as the James Hardy product. To have the window sent, to have a window centered. Over the slop sink or utility sink in the back, you, second floor laundry room. Um, and the window to stay in the closet is at his option. Is that correct?
Uh. It wasn't all of it, I don't think.
Go ahead and fill it in because I'm writing while I'm talking.
So it was, I I remembered the comments that I think the, so the first one was that proposed the larger windows centered above sink in the laundry room.
Yeah.
The second one was front dormer siding to match new.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, third, uh, clarify the drawing detail. Uh, the roof pitch for the apartment buildings, which guaranteed Dwayne will wanna cover that for sure.
Yes.
My fourth note here was the egress size. On the left elevation meet the existing egress standards and size and style defined.
Yeah, he's gonna have to do that for building anyway, but if you wanna incorporate that into the motion, that's certainly fine.
I think that was everything we discussed.
Yeah, there was the window consistency, right?
Right, that's what I'd like to see.
Yeah.
That the windows are consistent throughout the house.
Yeah.
Thanks Gail.
Can we mash that all into a motion? Hank?
Yeah, I, then I, what I would do is I would add. Uh, motion to approve subject to a window being centered over the utility sink in the, in the uh, utility room on the second floor. Uh, the. Siding on the front. Being changed to match the hardy siding on the rear, so it's one homogeneous project. Uh, clarification of the detail of the sizes of the windows. Um, and also to uh, have more detail for the building department. Regarding the uh, trim aspects and the tie-in on the uh, sides of the project.
I think that's about as far as we can go without a design on the fly situation.
Yeah, I, we we probably don't need to put the last part in there because Dwayne will wanna see how they're doing it. But uh, having said that, if that's, if that's good for everybody, then the motion would be, that would be the motion.
I'd like to say that I, I think we are designing on the fly here. Um. Where, we'd have to define what size window that was and what type of window it was in the laundry area. Um, I I really think there's too many issues here. To not see it drawn up. And then go back through the approval process.
Well, I guess um. Todd, if you wanna continue with your motion, it sounds like it's laid out. We can take a vote or if Rick, you wanna make a motion to table. Uh, we can flush it out that way. So I guess the first question would be, Todd, do you wanna move forward with the motion as Hank laid it out? Or do we wanna retract that based on Rick's comment?
And, you know, I I uh, I I would wanna move forward with it. I I don't see the, I I understand where Rick is coming from. But I don't know, and and since I'm, this is my third meeting. Um, do the, you know, I I'm working off the fact that I I would, that uh, the process would work out and that those. Uh, issues would be uh, monitored and handled. As they move forward appropriately, I'd hate. Cause I I I got a feeling that all these would be clarified rather quickly. Uh, and I'd hate to delay uh, the badges for another month. Uh, to clarify. Uh, window design, uh, unless I'm misinterpreting. Uh, how this gets handled after it leaves us.
If if it's confusing and it sounds like the motion is convoluted. Uh, one thing that you might be able to do is. To take the details off of there since that's handled from the building department anyway. And limit your motion to the siding to match the front and the back. And to have a two oh two oh, a minimum of a two oh two oh window. Centered over the uh, sink in the back utility room. And that could probably distill it down. If that's the pleasure of the commission.
The other option that would. Allow this to go through the approval process normally would be to. It, Ben, I think we're all in agreement that we. Overall, the addition's fine. It's just details. You could take the next. Month, right, or next week and revise it whenever it's due for the next meeting. And you could proceed with your detailed plans for building department submission and building permit. Over the next month and be ready to submit that after next month's meeting. Because these plans as they stand won't go to the building department, right Hank?
They would, they would, these, these plans would not pass the building department. I mean, they may be good enough for you to make a motion. Um, they're not gonna pass the building department.
Okay.
The only thing is you, you can decide what you wanna do with it, but hey, it's, it's. The, the upside is that you'll get a set of plans that will pass and will go to the building department. Um, the downside to it is, is that not having the approval will delay his ability to order material. So there's. Those are the two factors really with that. But other than that, um. Either, either way, either. You're gonna have a delay either way, Rick. I mean, he's gonna have.
I wouldn't order materials without your building permit.
Huh?
I wouldn't order that many materials without your building permit.
I absolutely would not.
Yeah. So Ben, that's my suggestion. Um. Personally, I have had good luck doing that. So. Take that as a suggestion. Obviously, there's a little bit of financial risk if. Um, if there's changes made at the next meeting, but I think we're generally in agreement that. The addition with some minor changes would be okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I was.
Uh, I guess my, my recommendation at this point, since, since Todd put a, a motion forward, uh, I would suggest we vote on it. If it uh, does not pass, then we maybe move to a motion from Rick to table.
We don't have a second on it yet. So it might fail.
Right, we don't even, we don't even really have a motion out there yet. Yeah, um. I get, I get the process now and I, and Rick, I appreciate you uh, your comments and and clarifying that for me. Uh, how that works through. I I've been, my main concern is I, I personally, I think we have. You know. A um, consensus that we, we're all going to approve this as long as it doesn't go completely awry in the next. Whatever. I just didn't wanna have to delay a neighbor of ours i- in moving forward with something. Uh, but understanding what this process is. Let me, let me just put this out there and then we as a group can say yay or nay. If we don't get a second, then Ben's gotta. If I'm understanding this correctly. Ben then has to go to the building side of this and 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 get that approved and then come back to us, get the plans.
No, that's, that's not, no, that's not gonna happen. He's not gonna get, this won't even go to the building department until I have approval from the planning commission.
Okay. So, okay. Well. Alright, uh, this may be, uh, alright, I I I just, I'll throw the motion out there with the. Uh, uh, to approve it with the siding match. Uh, and then the win- window centered back, uh, a minimum of two by two.
I second with the conditional uh, recommendations and proposals of the planning commission.
Okay.
Hank, does that fly for a motion?
Um, hey, I would, I would just assume that you, if you're gonna articulate conditions, i- if you're gonna mention conditions that you would articulate them. Or leave them off and let the uh, Michigan residential code handle them, which would. Dictate what kind of plans Dwayne wants and what he wants to see and how they're gonna build it. Typically, um, we don't so much get into that, like framing details and that. Although like Rick says, um. This is gonna be a difficult one, so. Uh, but that's something.
My issue is not how it's done, it's just that it doesn't look right. And if the intent is to make it look like what's shown on the paper, then I have an issue with it. But Hank, I agree with you. We can't just say recommendations and proposals. It has to be specific. To what we're asking for.
Right, either articulate them or leave them off would be your best bet.
Alright, well, that's up to Blake, I, because Blake added that too.
Just articulated, uh, sorry, I thought before that we just articulated these kind of five points of. Of. Am I?
Blake, I think you would have to say. A motion to approve and then list the five points as a matter of record.
Got it. Okay. Uh, so I second with the conditional proposal that we uh, the larger windows centered above the. Sink in the laundry room. Um. Number two, the front dormer siding to match with hardy board. Uh, number three, clarify the drawing details. For the department of buildings, which again, Dwayne will do. Um. For defining that egress size, the left elevation to meet egress standard, size and style to be determined. And five, to Gail's point, the window consistency, uh, clarification and sizing. Is that it?
Tell of a motion.
Todd would have to, Todd would have to accept the amendment to the motion.
I, uh, Blake, thank you for clarifying and adding those. I accept the. The uh. Amendment to the motion.
Okay, uh, Chris.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Uh, Rick.
Hey.
Uh, hi. So, I think we passed.
Todd is the maker of the motion and Blake was the second.
Blake was the second.
Okay. Alright. So that is passed. Mister Badges, you're going to have to have your um. Contractor or your uh, designer. Or perhaps both uh, get in touch with the city so that we can get some plans that will actually be able to be built. That we could approve.
Okay, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Alright, good luck with your project.
Alright, thank you.
Bye Ben.
Bye everyone. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye, thank you.
So then Mister Chairman, at this point in time. Uh, the master plan documentation is almost ready. The survey closes on the twenty-ninth. We will have additional materials for you in the August meeting. Um, I'm not sure the full extent of what that will be. Come September, we anticipate coming back to you with the start of some chapter and verse for you to take a look at, approve and discuss. And um, that, that's, that's where it'll get exciting and you can start to put that in the perspective. I think you'll start to see what the, the, what the fruition of the meeting at the rec center was. Uh, as well as the online survey. I will tell you that at this point in time. I've been told that for the online survey for the master plan portion of it, not the DEI. We already have over five hundred responses. So it's a, a very good effort and a lot of people will be weighing in on that. So um. I I would, we, we still have more to go, so I'm I'm excited about that opportunity. So we will have some information to you. What that information will be, I won't know until we see what the results are and the planners have, uh, you know. Taken all the information and come up with some kind of spreadsheet. Or some way to disseminate the information to you. Um, but we will be busy in August. We will do anticipate having some of that for you.
Any idea when we'll see the results of the focus group meetings they did last week?
The DEI? Um, I do not, uh, other than that's sure that survey has closed. Um, that will probably be presented, presented along the same timelines. Late August, early September for that. Our planners from MKSK will then be incorporating that information. Into a chapter and an underlying theme. For uh, the master plan at which we're going to take a look at, which you're basically gonna have to do is take a look at and see. Uh, if that, if if the weave on that, meaning how it's put into the master plan. Is uh, what the vision that you wanna see with respect to how that information is used in the master plan, because that will be your province.
Okay, great, that sounds good.
Hank, will we be having additional master plan meetings other than our planning commission meetings?
I would not anticipate that until September, possibly October.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, alright, any other master plan things Hank, or is that it?
Nope, we're good. Um, other than we were excited at the number of uh, responses that we got. That's typically very high for this type of thing. Nope, we're good, um, other than we were excited at the number of uh, responses that we got, that's typically very high for this type of thing.
Great, yeah, that's probably the highest we've gotten for anything, isn't it?
It is.
Awesome.
Do we know, Hank, i- if these are uh, from other computers other than just one computer?
We don't know that, but we will get a spreadsheet based on a couple of things that have happened in the past, um, I've asked for an IP address report. Uh, what that'll do is they'll feed it in and then if there's duplicate IPs, um, we'll get it, I'm not worried about the one or the two from the same IP. But if we get like the last time, we get five from the same IP, ten from the same IP, th- then you have. You know, th- then you've got a, uh, an issue, but we'll see what it is, um, we did have some that were on the. Computer and then again, we also have some surveys that have been dropped off at City Hall. So there's some results that haven't yet been tabulated into that. And a lot of times the seniors uh, typically would vote for something other than um. Uh, would vote for something other than uh, electronic, so it makes it easier for them to communicate, I do see Blake has his hand up.
Oh, thank you, it's not specifically related, well, maybe it is to master, but we talked about the solar ordinance last week, we voted on it, it passed. Just for kind of record, what's the next step now?
The next step is it'll go to the city commission when they would like to have it on their agenda, the letter is written to go with it. Um, I will have to get Mike to sign it, but um, I'm not anticipating that until probably. October or September, October, November, depending on what the schedule is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Chris?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
Hi, all right, so you guys, we're in person next month, right?
We are in person, that's the other change, uh, we will be meeting in person, all the boards and commissions will be here in the city commission room. Um, for a lot of you, it's been a long time since we've seen you in person, for others of you, um, it'll be good to get back in the room, so with the public.
Todd, that means you're gonna have to stay in town for more than twenty four hours.
Yeah, I, well, that too, and I gotta wear pants.
It means you can't be, you know, lakeside right now, you'll have to be there.
Todd, we're still gonna be behind the desk, so if you get there early enough, you can probably.
I would suggest that the city.
Yeah, I I'm gonna ask for a dress code where Todd does have to wear.
I second that.
Thank you.
I suggest that the city ends up somewhere, whether it's on signboards or whether it's on. E-blast or on the website that states that starting in August. The commissioner meetings and the committee meetings will be in person, so people will know that.
They're already doing that and the notices uh, that go out are already stating in person meetings. So, we're, we kind of have that, um. Probably depending on what it was, it might not hurt to throw one up on a marquee if we don't have.
I agree, not everybody E-blast, so.
And uh, yeah, no, that's true, but then, you know, people do get around the woods, so we'll see what happens with that, that's not a bad idea, Gail, thanks. We'll, we'll see if we can make that happen.
All right, thanks everybody, see you next month.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Bye guys.
Bye.